Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, in the name of the.
Okay. Let the record reflect Mr. Fountain is currently out for the CAC meeting. All their council members are present. Do we have any public comments for this? Okay.
Carry forward with it.
He won't, he's not going to speak on that public comment. He's going to speak on that.
Okay.
If it's him, then yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so he's going to speak on it.
Okay. So consented agenda, A, approval of minutes from meeting held May 12, 2025.
Make a motion to approve minutes from meeting held May 12, 2025.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect the motion carries. Move on to discussion and action items. A, discuss considering possibly call for public hearing before city council to review recently adopted impact fees. And we have comment from Mr. Melvin Barber.
All right. So I printed this out. I highlighted some sections that I'm going to be talking about, so make it easier to see exactly which sections I'm talking about specifically. That'd be easier if we just find and you don't have anything to look at. And actually print it out.
Thank you.
No deal?
No.
You can have my, I cannot look at it while I'm.
So I've spoken to most of you with, through phone or email or conversations day to day about the impact fees and kind of some of the objections I've had. So I want to go through a couple of areas tonight that have highlighted that and kind of bring it up and just see if we can come to a conclusion on this. So I want to preface this by saying I'm not against an impact fees, right? Completely understandable. I understand the need and use for them. They have, they have been implemented in many cities for a reason. My main point here today is I believe the charts and data being looked at are just being looked at incorrect. So for the first part, if you flip to, I think it's the third page, the first highlighted section. In the water and wastewater service area is part of the CIP. It states, "The service units for water and wastewater improvements will be assessed in terms of residential equivalent connections, R E C, or the volume of water used by a standard five-eighths inch water meter during a one-day period. Single-family residential units are equivalent to one R E C. Multi-family residential, commercial, and industrial units will be adjusted to reflect their respective demand on the water and wastewater distribution and collection systems, and in accordance with their ratio to a five-eighths inch water meter as established by the American Water Works Association." So this paragraph is stating that a single-family residential unit is equivalent to one R E C, one R E C. This should qualify for the five-eighths inch impact fee. It only talks about adjusting the units to multi-family, i.e. apartments, commercial or businesses, and industrial units. This does not state that the units will be adjusted based off the requirements of the system in their area. So this study shows that when looking at impact fees and costs, it is about the impact to the system and not about the size, which relates to apartments, businesses, and other bigger industrial complexes, not a single residential house. The impact to the system is what affects the price, not the water main size. I was told in numerous emails and conversations that the flow was a moot point, and this could not be further from the truth. So when you look at Boyle's Law, you'll see that pressure and volume are inversely proportional to each other, right? They affect each other. Changing one changes the other. It's very important to understand when looking at the issues at hand. The impact fee increased for the residents of Oakwood Shores because we are having to use a one-inch water main to achieve normal flow to our houses. The pressure is not terrible to hydrants, but due to poor system design, the houses are just not getting the correct water pressure. This is the reason a one-inch water main is having to be used. Increasing the volume of the water main makes it to where you can achieve the same flow with smaller pressure. This does not mean we're getting more flow than a five-eighths inch water main used in other areas. It means we are having to use a one-inch to get the same flow as a five-eighths inch in other areas of Richmond. The city knows that the pressure is bad and that the system is flawed, evidenced by the fact that if I want to put a three-quarter inch water main after my residence in Oakwood Shores, I have to sign a document stating that if I'm not happy with the water pressure and increase it and want to increase it to a one-inch, I have to pay for that out of my own pocket. Five-eighths inch water mains are not even in the conversation out there because of the poor water pressure in Oakwood Shores. The chart on City of Richmond's page, it needs to be updated, shows the maximum allowable impact fee for a one-inch water main is $4,023. Shows March, I think 13th or 18th, 18th to 2025, so that was, I don't know why that states that. It might just need to be fixed. So, the water main. Another part of this CIP is based off of population growth. I'm not going to get into the correct census numbers and things like that or another improvement plan. Your CIP states that they are expecting 10 homes a year, and this is the next highlighted section, sorry. 10 homes a year in Oakwood Shores for the next 10 years. Those numbers weren't too far off until about 2025. I pulled the numbers, looked at data. When I pulled the records in May of 2025, you had one house built out there the whole year. Previously, you were seeing about one a month, sometimes more. Raising that impact fee has impacted your own projections and is going to make it where when you reassess, you're not going to have the correct data to support the fees. It's going to go in the opposite direction and cause more problems in the future. When the fee to add a water main was only around 2,400, you had very good growth. The other areas in the CIP, beginning at year six, you still have time, but there's a long way to go there, right? For 42 connections. That land is still owned by Cochran and McClure, nothing's going on with it. The other areas are in the same boat, but my main point is that higher impact fees are going to do nothing but hurt the growth of the city. People aren't going to want to pay almost $10,000 in a water main fee to build a house. You've already seen it hurt your growth, and I would hope that bothers you as a committee and a council. During the conversation I've had with some other individuals, I was asked, "What does it truly hurt if people don't build in Oakwood Shores?" That was disparaging to hear. The more houses, the more money for the residents of Richmond. The more development and building done in other areas, the more money Richmond will have for further improvement. A city should always look for growth and how to increase it. With the current impact fee, the exact opposite is happening. The growth has been stunted. The last point I want to discuss, about water meter size, that's the next highlighted section. This equivalency table is used to increase the fee for residents that have to use a one-inch water main to achieve proper flow. As stated earlier, this chart is to be used for apartments, businesses, and industrial units due to the higher demand for volume they have. This chart uses the maximum continuous duty flow for a standard residential water meter to larger meters. The fees are then scaled up based on the ratio of the standard residential water meter to that of a larger water meter. This does not mean that the larger meter in a subdivision should be scaled up due to poor pressure. It means that when apartments, businesses, and industrial establishments use a bigger water main due to, due to the increase in volume they're going to be using, they must more flow than any other residents in Richmond. It's to give us the same flow to be able to use the same amount of volume that the other areas are able to achieve with a five-eighths inch water main. The ratio, the ratio used in the chart comparing the five-eighths inch water main to the one-eighths inch water main shows that a five-eighths inch water main can achieve 10 gallons per minute flow and a one-inch can achieve 25 gallons per minute flow. That's a 2.5 ratio, and that's the ratio that was used to charge more for the bigger mains for those businesses. The ratio does not exist for the residents anywhere where impact fee is 3880. That states specifically for a service unit, which is defined as a single residential house. It doesn't. As I stated, impact fees are just that. They're fees put on for the impact to the water systems, not an impact based on the water meter size. The impact the residents in Oakwood Shores have on the water system has the exact same impact any other resident in Richmond has. There is no ratio that exists that we don't use a substantial amount more water than is supposed to be charged to businesses. We just want to be charged fairly for what we are getting. It is my suggestion to this council to reconsider the rate they put into place of 9,700 for the one-inch water main, as that ratio does not apply to single-family homes. The ratio is specifically for the aforementioned. The maximum impact fee listed is 3880 for the residential equivalency and should be just that. As I said, impact fees are needed, and there is a benefit to them. But we're ending of the chart and should be easily rectified with a simple vote to have the one flat rate for all residents and then use the chart where appropriate.
I'm sorry, is there the impression that we're charging different rates to different people depending on where they live in the city?
No, so this isn't just about Oakwood Shores. This is anybody trying to build.
But you made a statement a couple of times that you're being charged more.
Yes, I am.
You're not.
Yes, I am, $9,700. That's not correct.
You're not paying for a service. You're paying for an impact.
Yes, volume of water.
Correct.
So my one-inch water main is not any more impact. Right, you're paying for the volume of water that is going to be used. Your impact fee is the impact your house is going to have on a utility system. I'm not paying for a one-inch water main. I'm paying for the volume of water my house is going to be using. So if you took the volume of water used by a five-eighths inch house and compared it to the board, the impact.
Then why growth in Oakwood Shores has stifled? Are you aware?
I didn't say sole reason.
Well, you did. You said, "This is the reason."
Right.
Okay, which implies this is the sole reason.
It's a reason, not sole.
Do you think that interest rate probably has a lot to do with that?
Yeah, but that doesn't come into the equation of what we're talking. I'd rather focus on the data at hand to the conversation.
It absolutely is when, when you're implying that the impact fee is the reason why growth has stifled in Oakwood Shores.
It's one of the factors, that's literally this. I mean, I'm building a house at a much higher interest rate, and the one thing I gawked at was the impact fee.
Yeah.
So there's many factors that affect it, but I'm focused on the actual.
I think it's probably inappropriate time.
Just going to let him go through his.
Yeah, that's everything.
I assume he was finished when he was talking.
Thank you, Melvin.
About Jared.
Mayor and council.
I don't have any questions for you. I believe Eric, you and I talked, and he's supposed to talk. Were you going to talk through how the rate was developed?
Sure.
The assumptions used, the rates, the size, et cetera?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think one of the first things to do would be to go back to chapter Texas. A service unit needs a standardized measure of consumption. Use, generation, or discharge attributed to an individual unit of development calculated in equivalent trends, applicable to the political subdivision in which the individual unit of development is located during the previous 10 years. So the study is, what are we going to consider a service unit? And that's where the five-eighths inch meter comes into play. If you look at other cities' impact fees, nearly all of them have the exact same basis. And you'll see that A W W A table with the different duty flows in, in other communities. So it's generally widely accepted to use a five-eighths inch. The process, we worked with, worked with council, who was the CIAC, to establish what a service unit is. We established what the land use assumptions was, established what the growth projections were. And nobody has a crystal ball, so you know, as, as the gentleman stated, you know, maybe growth has slowed a little bit, and there's, there's lots of reasons for that. It's very difficult to know exactly what the reason is. Projections in Oakwood Shores were generally on track until May of 2025. Well, the study was done in 2024, so at the time of the study, we used the best information that we had and, and had public hearings and generally got council's approval on, on what we were proposing and how we were progressing with the impact fee study. Once the land use assumptions were established and the growth projections were established, we then went through the process of establishing how we would serve the growth in the areas where the growth was anticipated. And then through those is where we came up with the, the capital improvement plan and then associated cost with that. Once the capital improvement plan was established, there's a dollar amount associated to it. And that dollar amount is, we had, we then determined the amount of growth in the next 10-year period that's attributable and used that to come up with a, uh, came up with the, a dollar amount attributable to the growth in the next 10 years. That number is then cut in half, so half goes to the builder or the developer, and the other half is paid for by existing repairs. Once that was established, we came up with a maximum assessable impact fee. And then council, at council's discretion, they had the option of assessing that maximum amount or some amount less than that. So that's, that's pretty much where we're at. Impact fees ran into place in September of last year. And there's a one-year grace period in which if the building permit is pulled and the property is not replanted, that property is not subject to impact fees. So we're coming up on that one-year interval pretty quickly. In lieu of that, the previous impact fees would, would still apply.
Do we have any data that reflects surrounding cities' impact fees?
We do.
Directly within 10, 15 miles?
Probably a little further than 10 or 15 miles.
I saw those. We have Lake Jackson, Mingleton, anything like that. Because that's, I think what Mr. Barber was getting at is that could play a decision in where somebody would move in a direct area. So.
It can, but there's also a drastic difference in the amount of sales tax revenue between those two cities.
I get it.
We do not have the luxury of the sales tax revenue, revenue that Lake Jackson has, which means it's a further burden on the taxpayers who already live here.
Totally understandable. I knew this was going to be a heated conversation, but I think the homework he did is very relevant because the, the data that was brought up is from 2024. We're talking about current times now.
And the, the volume of water piece, I think is the main piece we need to look at is the volume of water that we're consuming at a house out there with a one-inch is not more than the volume of water consumed by a five-eighths inch house over in Ogbon Woods, too. We just have less pressure, so we have to widen our system to achieve the same volume.
Doesn't change the impact.
Doesn't change the impact to the system in any way, shape, or form. It is the exact same impact no matter what size.
It could get complicated if you did have a business that came in and wanted a one-inch meter. Or just a, just a single-family residential home, say in the middle of town that wants a one-inch meter. What then do you charge that individual? Do you charge them a lesser amount? Or, chapter 395, though it does not get into that sort of detail.
What's your gallons per day? What is your service unit's gallons per day? What does one service unit equal? Because TCQ says 280 gallons per day.
Generally, yeah, I mean, different cities have different.
No, TCQ, one service unit.
Mr. Gregory, Mr. Gregory, can you come up and speak?
I'm asking your engineer, what is his service unit equal gallons per day? Because TCQ is 280 gallons per day.
TCQ recommends that.
280 gallons per day.
I understand, I understand.
But this is, this is.
For public comment purposes, it's important to everything.
Yes.
Just if you want, you can't speak, but right now it's.
It's between Melvin and Ernie.
It's not, he can speak, he just needs to get up so he can be properly documented that he spoke.
I asked a question, I want to answer.
I get it, but you're on the board to question the engineer.
It doesn't really matter what you use because you have a, what matters is you have what the service unit is.
Okay, I'm asking what your service unit is.
Okay, let's, let's keep this legal terms. We, we need to focus on the matter at hand, so, Mr. Barber and yourself. So do we have any other questions in regards to this right now? Otherwise, Mr. Gregory, please come up and address.
He addresses the board, not the engineer. Anybody can speak to the board. The conversation between the public and the engineer does not, is not allowed.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm John Lieber, lived in Richmond, Richmond for many years, but I am now living out in the country. But I was part of the development of all of them, which one, two, and three. Also was, knew about Oakwood Shores and with that group of folks that developed it and in reverse to the, the roads and stuff like that, suggested to the council and to the city manager that, hey, you need to, you know, put concrete roads in, but because of whatever, we went ahead and they went ahead and put in the, the non-concrete. But two things, when that was put in, I was under the impression that a new water tower is supposed to help support that subdivision. And to put that subdivision in, that water tower was supposed to be put in. And the problem that we're having would not be out there in Oakwood Shores given it had water pressure to support it. It's not there, and it's, it's all about pressure. I'm a chemical engineer, it's all about pressure, what's getting out at that end. And if you don't have the pressure, you're not going to get the wall that you're designed around. So anyway, those are my two pieces.
You want to explain to them the difference between just because you have a water tower and getting the pressure down the line, because that's not it.
Right, so.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Okay. So just because you have an elevated tank out there, it's not necessarily need to have great pressure because the line size, if it's, think about trying to force a lot of water through a straw. You can force a lot of water through a hole better than you can force a lot of water through a straw. So it just comes down to the distribution size. That's, that's getting out to the development. In addition to that, some of the homes and most of the homes out there are set back in property voidways. So even from the distribution line at the street throughout the property line, there's a lot of friction loss in the pipe that we use for the house. It's a combination of both that really, really stifle the pressure, pressure.
So from my understanding, the pressure at the meters has been checked, and it's what it's supposed to be. It's what every other house in Richmond is. But the house is being set back so far, which is the owner building it there. You're having that friction loss in the water, which is reducing the pressure. It's nothing to do with the city supplying it. That's the fact that the setback is so far, that's where you're losing your pressure at.
It's definitely contributing it to it.
Mr. Gregory, to be accurate, static pressure is about the same. Yes, operating pressures are a bit lower at the hydrants. Yeah, at the hydrants, at distribution, that is distribution. Yes, sir, but operating pressure is a little bit lower in Oakwood Shores, a couple of areas of town.
What other areas, Cliff?
South, far south.
Like by Lake Jackson?
No, towards the creek, by the apartment complexes.
Okay.
They see, they see the same effect, but operating pressure is what matters. When you turn on your faucet, if you have a lot of demand, your operating pressure is not substantial. So you're not going to get the performance out of the services. This is why we recommend the bigger services, it's all we can do.
And that's all we're asking for, I mean, if you want to speak, so. That's, that's literally all we're asking for, right? We're not saying we want to consume a ton more water, give us a one-inch water main. We're saying we just want normal flow to our houses to be able to use the same water flow a five-eighths inch main is getting right there in Ogbon Woods, too. I live there now, I get great flow.
At a reasonable price.
At a reasonable price, right, so.
But we can only control that to distribution, that needs to be.
Right, but if, if I have to put a one-inch out, if I have to increase the volume to meet the pressure that they're getting there, why am I burdened with the bad system design? That's not my fault, I didn't design it, I just now have to make up for it. I have to have the impact fee charged me, which is fine, impact fees are fine. But I'm not getting two and a half times the volume of water used as a five-eighths inch water main anywhere else. I'm using the exact same volume of water, and that is what an impact fee is, is the volume of water your house is using in an impact fee system. When you read your CIP, that is how it is def.
I would just say that I think that you have very much legitimacy behind what he's saying, but we also have factors that we can't control. The long service lines, minimum square footage of 2,300 square feet, second stories, all these things that produce pressure, we can't control that. So we can just, to distribution, and he's speaking to the point, and he's correct. There's deficiencies there, but even with deficiencies fixed, we can't say that a five-eighths meter in Oakwood Shores on the service line is going to produce.
How far off is it? You said there was a deficiency, how far is it? Like, you know, are we talking like?
Well, we don't know.
Like, where would you say it's at compared to everywhere else in Richmond?
I would say an operating pressure deficiency of about 5 PSI.
Right now, what is it out there at his house? Where we checked it.
At that location by view, I believe it's.
At the hydrant, it's 41, I believe at the hydrant, yeah.
41, so our standard operating static pressure is going to be reported between 49 and 52 PSI.
And what does TCQ require?
35. And 20 under emergency situations, fall, fall below 20, you know, below line.
What Mr. Barber's being charged and what previous city has been charged, we need to meet in the middle. And those people that have already paid that impact fee need to make up the difference so that his 9,700 equals old Richmond's, and they come up to 9,700, or we adjust this fee. Because it's not any of our faults that this system is flawed, yet anybody trying to grow in Richmond has to pay $10,000 just to be tapped into this water.
Oh, that's.
That's not true.
That's used too much, nobody has to pay.
No, I understand, I understand.
One inch service. That is the best chance of success with the distribution system.
To get a decent pressure, correct.
So we will install a great water.
Based on choices by the homeowner.
We want to install five-eighths, but.
To get normal flow compared to a normal house, right?
Based on choices, or as far as back, I'm speaking, if you would let me finish. As far back as you want to build, the square footage that you choose to build, second stories, all of those things are a factor. Those are your choices that contribute to your pressure loss.
And it was the city's choice to annex that area knowing the system flaws.
You're correct.
So it's, why do I have to pay for that? Right, so all I'm asking, you defined it as a, a single unit. Your impact fee says 3880 for a single residential unit. That's all I'm asking, just charge, you have a maximum impact fee of 3880.
Were you required to purchase the one-inch meter, or did you request that?
I am being required or else I have to sign a document stating that if I'm not happy with that flow, I have to pay for an increase, so that tells me.
But you have the right to refuse that, correct?
When you finish, that tells me the city knows there's a system flaw, and that they know a three-quarter inch, within a year, I'm not going to be happy with that. It's been known out there, everybody here knows it, it's very well-known.
I, I think it's very important that, that council understands when, when the word flaw is used. That we meet TCQ requirements at distribution. So perceived flaw is different than a real flaw. We meet TCQ requirement at distribution, period.
We exceed the requirement.
We exceed it, yes.
Correct.
So when, when you're talking about a flaw, it, it's not, you keep saying that, that we accept, or we know there's a flaw and this, that, and that. We meet TCQ requirements, there is no flaw. It's not as high. It's not as high as you would like, is not, is, is high as, as you want it to be, but there's no flaw out there. We couldn't operate the water system if there was.
My main point is, the volume of water I'm using with that one-inch is no different than the volume of water used by five-eighth inch in Audubon Woods two. Your own CIP states, a single rec is the volume of water that would typically be used by a five-eighth inch water main. So if you pulled the volume of water used by any of those houses in Oakwood Shores and compared it to the volume of water used by houses in Audubon Woods two, I'd be very hard-pressed if you saw a significant difference. That's the ratio, if there is a ratio, that's the ratio that should be used, not one with the continuous maximum duty flow. If I'm truly using that much more volume of water, then yes, absolutely charge me for it. But I just want to use the same volume of water that they're using in Audubon Woods two or anywhere else in Ridgewood City. That is all I'm asking.
I want every, every resident of Ridgewood to have excellent pressure and pay an adequate price, that's all I care for. And our, this was put in, in place before any of our time.
That's not true.
Yes.
No, it isn't, these rates were absolutely not.
They were voted for during our tenure, but I'm saying that system was put in before our time, so now we're having, we're playing fight each other to get it right. This was not our doing, Amanda, we're just trying to make it right, is what we're trying to do. Where everybody is fair, everybody's fair.
That's your opinion, that we're trying to make it right.
Then let's all pay up to ninety-seven hundred dollars. You at your house.
For people who build new, absolutely.
No, no, even old Ridgewood, let's make it fair.
Here's my concern with it is, and, and I've, I've asked into this several times, and, and it's not, to me, it's not about who lives in Oakwood Shores, who lives in Glenwood, who lives in Audubon, that's not what I look at. What I look at is if a certain area is costing taxpayers more, that's the way I look at it. And so, i- i- I'm not trying to be unengineering, bad design, anything like that, is drawing more or is going to take more. You know, I've heard from so many people, that it's, it's blowing me in the face of, oh, we pay more taxes, we pay more taxes. Okay, the amount of money that has been spent there by taxpayers who do not benefit or even come close to benefiting from what's been put in there, I mean, I, I think it's like over seven million dollars that taxpayers throughout the whole city are having to pay as a collective to deal with Oakwood Shores, but Oakwood Shores wants to keep coming back saying we pay more taxes. That's fine, I understand you pay more taxes, but if you take collectively as a whole, the entire city.
Right.
If you want to separate Oakwood Shores from the rest of the city, the rest of the city pays way more in taxes than just Oakwood Shores on their own, but they've, they're paying because we didn't have all of this in place properly, or whichever way you want to call it, to offset the fees of growth, the taxpayers are paying for that water plant that's out there. They're paying for all of that, that's not Oakwood Shores that said, you know what, we're going to divvy it up, split it up between all of our homes and pay for it. But to me, that is unfair to put that burden on the whole rest of the city due to a bad design or a, a flawed design, when we've sat here and saw the numbers where you're getting an adequate amount of pressure, service pressure, but because the houses are being built so far back, because they're being built so big, because you're here who's owned her house for forty years, all of a sudden have to pay an increase.
She doesn't.
To, if it goes to taxes, it does.
Yeah, she does.
When we have to use tax dollars.
Is an impact fee.
When we have to use tax dollars.
Impact fee is a one-pound fee.
You're right, and it goes towards future growth. If we would have had that in place before, that water treatment plant and everything else that had to be built would have been paid for, but instead, that burden has been put on taxpayers.
But an impact fee is based off of what type of impact you're doing.
Right. A, a residential home, doesn't matter if it's a five-eighth inch line or a one-eighth inch line, a one-inch line, it's still a residential home, and it's the same impact. So it's, it should be the same fee, doesn't matter if it's a five-eighth inch line or a one-inch line, it's the exact same impact, so it should be the same fee. If I'm building a two, if I'm building a condo, that's a different impact. If I'm building an apartment complex, that's a different impact fee, because it's a different development. A residential home, that's what he's trying to tell you.
And, and I understand that, but what also is.
What he's saying is, he's being charged more money for a one-inch line, which is the exact same impact as a five-eighth inch line.
I've given up.
See what a house uses in Oakwood Shores versus anywhere else in the city?
That was a good data to look at.
So, do you have a, a final remarks about your fees?
No, I mean, it, it's my, my suggestion would be to vote on the fact that it's an impact fee based on the impact that a house has on the water system, not the size line it has. We don't have any other, we don't have any more impact than another house in Ridgewood anywhere. So my suggestion would be for the council or committee to vote to make it the same impact fee for all residential houses as stated in your CIP.
Thank you. Cast question. Yes, sir. Are you, what's your name? Jared. Jared, you're not Ryan, you're Jared. Okay, but you represent Strand? Correct. Now, I notice you list a lot of different cities on here. Do you know of any other cities that have, uh, impact fee similar to this that were the, the standard five-eighths doesn't work, so they have to use a one-inch in another part of the city? I'm not aware of other cities, um, that have done that. If you, like I said, if you look through all these cities and you mostly have them on the websites. Yes, before. I've not. Okay, and do we have houses in Oakwood Shores that are built on five-eighths service lines?
No. Three-quarters.
Three-quarters.
As it's most.
And, well, is there, is there a waiver that has to be signed for three-quarter inch, Cliff?
There, there is now.
Okay, and, does anybody here live in Oakwood Shores that has a three-quarter inch line? Yes, sir.
You have a one-inch.
I have a three-quarter.
You have a one-inch.
I have a three-quarter.
You have a one-inch.
I know what I have, I have a three-quarter.
Cliff, what's that, a one-inch?
I do not, I have a one-inch line. And if I had a one-inch line, Mr. Barber, I still have horrible pressures, is what I'm telling you. I cannot run two showers at once, or a sink and a shower, so.
There's rust in the water.
But is it, is that our final comments on this? Does any other council wish to make any remarks?
Can I say one thing? I think, appreciate the discussion, Mr. Barber coming up here. I think that there's an end-all goal, that somebody wants to see, including Mr. Barber. I want to make sure that, that council knows about this the, the right way, that if you want to see a reduction, or whatever that might be, so I wanted to petition Jared to kind of explain CAC and how you should probably move forward in the event that you do want to do so, and just make sure that we're all on the same page and we're going about it the right way.
I want all of our residents, not just Oakwood Shores, but the entire community to be happy, to be here, to be a part of this community, that's the only thing I'm trying to stress. I didn't come up here to pick sides for anything, I want everybody happy here.
So if council were to, were to move forward, or a public hearing would need to be prepared? So that, so the voting for a public hearing?
Thirty-day notice, a public, thirty-day notice of a public hearing that the impact fees are being reevaluated, there'd be, then there would be a public hearing, very similar to the, the process before, it'd be a public hearing where people can come and express their comments, and then ultimately council has their, the discretion to set the impact fees for water and wastewater, and whatever you'd like up to the maximum. And we have established the maximum as a. My understanding is we already had a public hearing on this? Correct. I wasn't here for that, but what was the attendance at that public hearing?
It was no one.
None.
None, and then we had a second public hearing? What was the attendance for that second public hearing?
None.
None, and now there's interest?
There was a third after that.
And what was the attendance for that one?
None.
None, okay.
No, actually, that's not true, there were three or four there for that.
Oh, the home building.
That was a different.
So there's only been two.
That wasn't this related to this.
Uh, the last thing that I'd like to say is that there's really no discussion in chapter three ninety-five of setting rates for different entities or different residential versus commercial, so you may want to check with legal to see if that is something that you're able to do, or if it just needs to be a flat across the board, five-eighth inch meters this, one-inch, one-inch meters this, and they, they get prorated based on that, based on that table.
Makes a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I got a question. If you reduce the distance from the meter to the house out there, what would that do to the water pressure in the house? Say from a hundred foot to fifty foot?
Well, I mean, we can't, we can't quantify how to improve it, but whenever you reduce length of line of any size, you reduce friction loss.
That's correct.
I understand, and, and I understand electricity, that's how electricity works, is water the same way?
Pretty much.
But you can also increase the diameter of the fee from the, this, on the meter of the house.
Let's, let's stay on, stay on topic. How does counsel wish to proceed with this?
So I've got one more thing real quick.
Last.
Can you identify yourself? Can you state your name and where you live?
I'm Bob Toots, excuse me, so I'm Jason Brough, I'm the president of, uh, Oakwood Shores HOA. So on the public hearing, I did not know about the first one, the second one, I had heard about it, and I was looking, watching, kept looking on council agenda, kept looking on council agenda, it was never posted on the council agenda. The one that we did find on council agenda was the meeting last month, where then when we had people here, all the board members was actually at our annual HOA meeting, it was on council agenda, and they said, oh, what, was that last month's meeting? Well, we didn't know about it because it wasn't on the previous month's agenda from March. But with the fees that were voted on, you know, if you go in and you get an application, it's a ninety-seven hundred dollar impact fee. So this was printed off of y'all website today, here's y'all fee schedule.
Right, we updated that last month. I understand, it takes a while to get codified through the system, doesn't make it any less legal, it's just not on the website.
So.
It, it just got passed toward the, for the fee schedule last month because in the previous ordinance that was adopted last year, it did not have a clause in there that updated the fee schedule, so that had to be done separately. So it was done last month, it was just kind of cleaning up the books to put those fees in the fee schedule, and they've been sent.
These fees have been in place.
Right, doesn't make them any less legal because they're not in the appendix.
So this was updated in March?
It was not.
Been in place since last, no, that's the date that it was updated.
The fee schedule was updated in March, yes, but a different fee, it wasn't that fee, we added a, we amended a different fee. So anytime the fee schedule, whether it's park rental rates to cutoff fees, anytime that's updated, that bottom line, the date changes.
So you got stuff that's a year old on your, on your fee schedule?
It's just the impact fees did not get updated on that ordinance, that was the agenda item for last month, they cleaned it up, and it's been sent for codification, it's just not on the website.
But last month, last month's meeting, y'all specifically said, oh, impact fees aren't being talked about tonight.
They weren't, they were being updated into the fee schedule, they were being adopted into the fee schedule, they were not being amended or talked about. It was just to bring our fee schedule in line with the ordinance that was already adopted, that's what's in the caption. If you read the ordinance caption, it states.
Not when it states, but here, here nor there. So, got something else for you all. So we get calls all the time about, you know, all that water being put in the ditches.
Is this about rates?
This is a different, different topic.
Is this about impact?
This is a different topic.
We can't talk about this.
Wait till this is done.
But you can do it in public comment over the next.
Yes, correct. Okay, is it all the comments? What's our motion on this, council?
I don't have a motion.
No motion on this?
No.
Okay, there's no action taken on this? And the motion dies? There is no motion, so.
There is no motion today.
Or, no motion, so. Okay, no future agenda items on CIC? These are reviewed every five years, right?
Yes.
Yes.
With the study required by law.
Time is now six fifty-seven, and this CIC meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Absolutely. So again, Jason Bro, Oakwood Shores HOA. So we've been getting a lot of calls lately about the, we're out there all the time, probably four times a week, opening fire hydrants, running them out in the ditch to make sure we're flowing the water through so we don't get any bacteria buildup out there. Over the years of time of doing that, sediment builds up in the ditches, and they don't drain. So people's not being able to mow. Well, we've been told over the years, you know, maintenance of the ditches is on the, on the HOA. You know, it's not on the city's responsibility. So my wife and I just purchased property out there, end of '20, beginning of '21. So we've been in this subdivision for two years. Been on the board for a year now. Well, I started thinking, I'm like, yeah, that just don't sound right. You know, we pay, we pay taxes, you know. How, how is that our responsibility to maintain the ditches? You know, cut grade in the ditches, take care of the outfall ditches when water from the city, main part of the city drains through the annexed property? You know, so, oh, it's in the annexation documents. Well, I'm not just going to take somebody's words for it. So I went and pulled the annexation documents, put in a request, asked for it. So this is the documents that were signed by the mayor in 2006. So where the tab is, I highlighted the section. So this is the plan of service. So section 1C Streets is on the previous page, but where I put the tab is number three. Service to include repair, maintenance of public streets, right of ways, including rehabilitation, repair, and ditch drainage maintenance. And so for years, we've been told that this was on the homeowners association. It's not on the city. Well, these documents here plainly states, you know, that when this city was, this property was annexed by the city, the city was taking that on. And so I know Cliff has started one section. You know, it might take a while, but the, the ditches don't drain out there. They hold water. You know, we're coming in the hurricane season, outfall ditches, you know, where all of the water in the city comes and flows through down the Bastard Bayou, goes straight through there. And they don't ever get cut unless we pay somebody to get out there and cut it. And that's something that, you know, we need the city to start looking into and taking care of. You know, that shouldn't be put on us. You know, so there's the documents. You know, this is the stuff that was, that was signed by the mayor. This is the stuff that was put in, filed with the county. I just wanted to bring that up. I know I've been telling everybody, I don't know if there's been any calls made about it, but because they've told me it's not, not worth calling because they've been told before that it's not the city's responsibility. It's on us to take care of the ditches. But just wanted to bring it up because it does need to happen. The ditches do need to be graded, needs to be cutting those ditches to help them drain. And outfall ditches do need to be taken care of. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. No, I appreciate it.
Any questions on this or?
Thank you. We have legal limitations on what we can discuss since it wasn't on the agenda. But since you did bring it to our attention, we can have the attorney review the documents and make sure that we are abiding by them and we're doing what we're supposed to do from the city's perspective, and we can put it as an agenda item on the next meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it up because it's been said, you know, it's not the responsibility, not responsibility. Well, it clearly states in the plan of service that that is what the city is going to take on, and it's not happening.
We'll have.
Understood.
Legal check it out, see what supersedes and everything, do as possible. Thank you, Mr. Bro. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. A, budget report May 2025. B, approval of minutes, meeting held June 16, 2025.
On the minutes, there was an error. I'd like to introduce an amendment that just, I had Jeremiah's absent, so I changed it to present. So if we do approve consent, this is amended, amended, please.
Oh, this is when he came late?
I don't know. I think I copied and pasted his previous.
That was the one before.
He was here.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you want me to finish?
I'll second.
It's fine, sorry. He had also the appointment of Stephen Mayor to.
Yes, well, I'll do C separately since that's a big ticket.
Yeah, you don't have to do it separately.
Okay. C, appoint Stephen Mayor to the Keep Richard Beautiful Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries.
Thank you.
You can breathe. Okay, next, we're going to allocate three minutes for the fiscal year 2026 budget workshop.
Three minutes. We have some money coming in, some going out.
All in favor?
Okay. Mayor and counsel, here I am again.
It's loading.
Okay. You can skip over the first two pages. It's just prettiness. It's hard to believe it's budget time again. This is our second budget meeting. Last month, we did more kind of generalities of where we were sitting. Add a little more firm information this time, but these are still projections. There's still best estimates, still guestimates. We won't have firm numbers until August. So one thing. This is the sixth year that we plan to prepare a budget that reflects actual cost of running the city with no fluff or unneeded spending. We're not putting any bells and whistles in or margarita machines or anything like that. We have included a 4% cost of living raise as well as merit-based raises that are based on performance evaluations. So those can be up to 3%. We do the merit every other year on even years. So fiscal year '26 is an even year, and then you get merit. We're going to discuss, and tonight, we're not going to approve, but we're going to discuss and get your feelings and thoughts about utility rates. And we are going to discuss some of our reserve transfers that we've been making. The next page is just our budget calendar. We will, as I said, we don't have our firm numbers yet. We will get, the county will give us our ad valorem totals sometime around August 1st. In August 11th, I'll be bringing you a budget, and it will be approved along with a tax rate in September. Tonight is to get your feedback. Okay. So because we are a city under 30,000, we are limited to an 8% increase in revenue on properties that were in place a year ago. That's opposed to bigger cities, which are limited to 3.5%. This is based, as I said, on properties that were on the rolls a year ago. So we can only, on that state property, we can only make 8% more than we did last year. I did my calculation, which never matches exactly what the county comes back with, but it's a good guesstimate. They have a lot of things that they plug in that I can't begin to predict. So right now, if we go with the voter-approved tax rate that allows 8% increase, we're looking at, for maintenance and operation of the general fund, we're looking at .455476 per hundred dollars of assessed value. Last year, or this current year, it was .450165, so it's slightly higher. The other component of the property tax rate is the debt INS rate. This is not up to us. This is dictated by the amount of debt payment that's required to be paid during the fiscal year, including interest and principal. So this figure, the way, based on our estimate for assessed values that we've received so far, would be .5, uh, .080819, which is lower than the prior year, .85634. So this would give us a total tax rate of .4, I'm sorry, .535295 per hundred dollars of taxable value, which is just slightly lower than last year. I mistyped. Prior year should be 299 at the end, not 295. So we're going down whatever that digit is. We're going from 299 at the end to 295. In April, I received estimated taxable assessed value from the county of $564,836,952. That is up from the prior year of $521,556,068 certified. Again, this is the county's early estimate. I think I asked this last year, but I can't remember. Is that estimate assuming any reductions based on protests? Yes. Okay. Not the certified, but the. The estimated value, right. And when we get our certified values in August, it'll still have an amount that is under protest because they aren't all completed. Right. But they will certify that this is the highest it can be, or lowest. Okay. They certify a value with that in mind. Of the difference in estimated taxable assessed value, $8,124,261 are new improvements, either new construction or, or improvements that increased assessed value. So that $564,000 less the $8 million is what we can increase tax on, up to 8%. Our estimated revenue for M&amp;O, which is the maintenance and operation for the general fund, is $2,572,696. Prior year was $2,347,863. So a slight increase. I do want to ask, again, say, this is very preliminary estimate. These are, these are subject to change and will change. Next page. This is just a graph showing where our tax rate has gone since 2019. So we have been able to bring it down. And the highlighted one down at the bottom is what I've included in this report tonight. The 2024 is what we are sitting at right now. Okay, the next page. Okay, so this is summary for our general fund. The actual column is through the end of May. I use that then to project some of our revenue sources based on an annualized rate. But overall, our revenue is looking to go up about $196,754, based on my estimates right now. The one that is going down from last year's budget is fines and forfeitures. That could change. There are tickets being given and things. But based on historical through the end of May, we're not going to hit the 110 that we had projected last year. Special revenues of $1,050,000, that is where the police LEOS money goes. And we didn't receive it yet this year, so.
What was that?
LEOS money.
What line is that going?
It's to pay for training. It's to pay for training.
Okay.
And the $5,401,000 that's under the actual, that is some money that was donated for outreach. So I'm not using that in projecting, donated to the police for outreach. So I'm predicting interest will stay about the same. And then miscellaneous income is where inspections, some of our rentals, different things go under that column. So I'm just predicting that'll be just slightly higher. So that brings us to the bottom. Again, these are estimates. Any questions? My three minutes up yet? Okay, next page. This is the expenditures. And this is every department within the general fund. I've highlighted green, the ones that are going down. I've ignored the ones that are going up. No, I didn't highlight the ones going up, but they're there. The admin has gone down because last year, we included a master plan for parks and streets that was a one-time thing. The police is the highest. They have about half of our employees. So pay raises and increased health benefits have affected that the most. Our health insurance, we just got prices last week, and they were an increase. I have the increase in here later. But between the raises and the, and the health insurance and then other insurance, that, that is where we've seen increases in our line items. But we're still $500 below last year. Any questions?
Hey, so I got a question on the 4% COLA for all employees and then the merit increase. So does every entity within the city, do they have like a certain?
We, we do annual evaluations. The directors perform evaluations on their employees and staff. And then based on how the evaluation went, they can get 1%, 2%, or 3%.
The evaluations are already figured in that, so 1%, 2%, 3%.
They were completed in May. Okay. Next page. Okay. So this is just some items of note in here. I've already mentioned some of them. The budget includes, I've included a 10% increase in our property liability insurance. We don't have firm quotes yet. They should be coming any day, but he told us 10% to 12%. I've included 10. I'm optimistic. Administration expenditures are reduced from last year because of the master plan. City maintenance includes a purchase of a mower, a mower deck, and a truck. But I've also included a transfer into the general fund for that amount from replacement fund. And under personnel, as I said earlier, it includes a 4% COLA. And under personnel, as I said earlier, it includes a 4% COLA. It includes a merit increase for all employees up to 3%. The payroll increases for those two different raises equals 67,473 for 19 employees. Our health benefits are quoted at 15% above last year. So that's figured in there. And then, as has, as they've done for several years, CCPD, CCP has approved a $15,000 transfer into the general fund from CCPD to DIFRIPPD overtime. Any questions?
And the insurance is there, there was, in Ann Arbor, rather, a neighboring city was looking at it because they, everybody expects the insurance to increase so much that they're looking at the value of what is insured and you're going to end up paying more in premiums than what you're insuring is even worth, so...
Ours is going up too. We added North Water Plant last year, so we took a big jump last year.
Right.
We also had an increase on the named storm recently, because they have decided they don't like how this building is sited, so we have to pay more. So, but we did have our values reevaluated two years ago, I believe, when the North Water Plant was getting ready to be added. I think they reevaluated everything. We aren't at a point right now to self-insure, if that's what you're talking about.
Well, not like everything, but I know you have different buildings that have to be insured and...
Like replacement versus liability insurance.
Yeah, right.
Like the community building is something that comes to mind.
Right. You know, I mean, if you're going to spend, you know, $15,000 in premiums on a community building, how much does that cost of the value of replacement versus...
And I don't know, off the top of my head, how much each building's premium is. But we looked at that.
That's, that's what drove us to find the infrastructure that was not being covered.
Yeah.
And we, like you said, there's a couple we could, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
But then we found water towers, pump stations.
That weren't covered.
Yeah, critical infrastructure.
Yeah. Kind of want to keep on, you know. Any other questions on that?
Was the, the park, was it covered?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
The pavilion?
They did a good job, too.
It was partially covered by FEMA for the amount that was caused by the storm damage and the remainder.
State of Texas picked it up. FEMA covered 75%, and state covered the rest of the 25.
They did a good job, I agree. It's nice. Somewhat. Swamp killers.
Ready to move on? Okay. So now we've talked about revenue, and we've talked about expenditures. The bottom part of the budget is our financing sources and uses. So these are the transfers to and from the general fund. We have the transfer I mentioned from CCPD for covering overtime. And then we have the transfer from replacement for covering the new truck, mower, and mower deck for public works. Those will come in. Uses, so right now I have this set up to automatically calculate 10% for our contingency fund that we transfer out. We have routinely, since Eric and I came, put money into replacement, replacement for fire, public works, and, what's the other? Equipment and vehicles, public works, equipment and vehicles. And then we give 5,000 to KRB. So we want to continue that. We raised them slightly, well, some doubled, some slightly, last year, because we are behind on our reserve saving for those things. The fire department wants a new truck, the cliffs always want something new, so we're trying to keep that funded. So, but I do want to give my little blurb on contingency. If we had not been saving into contingency a year ago this month, we would have been in trouble.
Because of Barrow.
Because of Barrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wrote, we wrote, in the first three months, we were out a million, two?
Yeah, something like that.
Million, one, to be safe.
July, August, September of last year, right?
Yeah.
So that comes out of pocket here.
And there, there were cities in our region that didn't have the capability to pay the bills that came up. So, or they were robbing Peter to pay Paul type thing. So I do want to stress, I strongly encourage us to keep funding our contingency fund at this point, because we found out Barrow was relatively a small storm, and it depleted it just about. We were down to about 200,000, so... So any questions on that? Okay, so that brings us down to a change in fund balance. Again, estimate, 59,798, which means that where I have beginning fund balance listed, that 59,000 would get added to that. And that is our non-restricted fund balance. Our, our general fund has a bigger fund balance than that, but it's either restricted or not spendable. Any questions? Okay. The next page is the transportation fund. Up to now, Cliff and I had always just taken all the income from the transportation fund, the sales tax for streets, the transportation fee and any interest, and we just divvied it up over the three categories. Streets M&amp;R, sidewalks M&amp;R, and drainage M&amp;R. He never spent it, or very much of it, but that way he had it to spend without having to come to council to get approval. This year, we decided to do more, I guess transparent would be the word, I don't know. He, he projected more what he thinks he needs to spend. So he had, has put in 50,000 into streets M&amp;R and 25,000 into drainage M&amp;R. So right now, the beginning fund balance is 391,000, and if that's all he spends, it'll go up about 248,000. Again, the revenues are projected based on historic's. So, any questions? Okay. Now the enterprise fund. Good news is it fits all on one page. At least the numbers do. We have a beginning net position of 516,000. The amounts I have in here for revenue are based on current utility rates. We have seen no growth in connections over the last year. Prior to this, I, I was seeing 2% to 3% growth. This year, there was no growth. It actually went down a little bit. So you see a negative in the change from '25 to this year. Our sewer department, it, the expenditures or expenses have gone up. Our water department has gone up. Solid waste has gone down, but then again, it's connections. So our bills move less. It's based on historical.
On the sewer, Trish, does that, does the proposed budget include the repairs that we were, the necessary repairs we were notified about?
Yeah, so we're going to talk about that in a couple slides.
Okay.
Then we have, so our, our net operating income is lower by 360,000. We have non-operating income, which is interest. We bill one of the apartment buildings because our crew does lift maintenance, lift station maintenance. Those kind of things go in there. But, and then our operating expense, a non-operating expense is our debt payments primarily. That's gone down, because we've paid off one this year. Now I've added back in the principal on the debt payments, because those don't affect fund balance. So right now, as it sits, we're looking at a total change in net position of a negative 182,000 plus. I don't like that. This has been probably the toughest year to budget for the enterprise fund.
Do you think that's a lot of that to do with BWA rates?
Some of it.
Some of it.
So let's go on to the next page.
Well, I want to just kind of clarify on that. Just to provide clarification, and I think there's always a lot of confusion, because I know we're going to talk about it later with the water rates. Everything on this enterprise fund has to be paid out of the revenue generated from...
Water sewer.
Water sewer, right. You can't take from the general and pay this.
I mean, we can, but it has to be an act of council.
That's okay.
And that's where the city got into some trouble.
Right.
Before we came, is that they were doing some loans and, so we want to avoid it. We definitely can't take money out of enterprise and put it in general. So the next page. So as I said, the revenue that I showed was at the current utility rates. It includes the payroll increases we talked about before for seven employees. It includes the health benefits increase that we talked about before. Then there are some major line items, and I think this is what Amanda was alluding to. These are necessary repairs to get done in fiscal year '26. Under sewer line maintenance and repair, reconstruction of the lift station number two electrical panel is estimated at 45,000.
And that's our percentage per the contract that we have?
No.
Is that correct?
No, this is, this is not the, you're talking about the water plant?
Oh.
The sewer plant.
Oh. These are just necessary repairs we need to make.
Within the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Under water, other equipment maintenance and repair, we've increased maintenance and repair just because we have more. We have the new generators and we have the Northwest, North Water Plant. So the maintenance and repair under that has gone up, 10,000. The water line maintenance and repair, we have three items. Well number five needs a rehab, that's 60,000. Second base station is needed for the E-meters, that's 72,000. We have a lot of trouble with the meters needing, because they're so spread out. And then, I don't know what these are, but four back T sampling stations.
Is that for water, lift, TCEQ compliance?
Sorry, I'll...
The back T sampling stations, is that for TCEQ compliance?
Yeah, we currently, we're required to take so many samples per month. Right now, we're grabbing out the spigots on homes, which is the worst thing you can do. You get away with it around situations that you can't control, such as blowing ACs, high weeds, increase for the contamination. So the stations will put it straight on top of distribution, allows to control the area around it, and it's, it's just a better sampling.
More accurate.
Yep.
Thank you. And then, as you mentioned, Jeremy, BWA, the increase this year is 8%. We're going from 4.60, $4.60 a gallon, 1,000 gallons, 1,000 gallons, to 4.96 per 1,000 gallons. 4.96 a gallon would be really high. So these attribute for 3 and 10,000, which is just about double what, not quite double what our negative is. Now...
To, to answer your, your question on the, on the...
The plant.
Waste water treatment plant, there's been no engineering on that yet. We, we don't know but a rough cost, kind of, right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not...
When do we expect that?
I hope in the next few months.
Next year.
Yeah, it'll probably be next year.
Oh, next year? Like next budget year or next calendar year?
We hope next calendar year, budget year.
We hope next budget year.
Yeah. It is not in these numbers now.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were...
That's okay.
It's been, it's been lingering about for a couple of years, and I think it's just to the point now where they can't stop the leak. Then we'll...
Does our contract define a notification period for when they do the, complete the engineering and determine what repairs are needed versus when we have to ante up the money?
I don't think so.
We'll review contract...
We'll, we'll know in plenty of time, though.
Yeah.
You're sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how about that, sounds like they come before we do the budgets, and they say, oh, well, you owe us, you know, half a million dollars?
It's not going to make budget.
Okay. Yeah, so you can't. Is there anything?
And again, these are not firm numbers I'm presenting to you tonight, so they're, every day that I'm in my office, these numbers have changed.
No, I just know that that cost is going to be significant.
It is, yeah.
So that's why I'm asking all the questions.
And so that's one of the reasons we need to concentrate on our reserves, which segues into my next talk.
Yes.
So the next page, yeah, that one. So in 2019, a rate study was done by Strand, and they projected our, our utility rates for 2020 to 2025. We decided to wait for now to do another study to save that money, but we're still sticking to the goals that their study put into place. Those goals are, we cover 100% of the maintenance and operation of our utility operations. We cover 100% of the debt requirements for the utility fund. And we set aside 10% of the annual expense for a reserve. When I came here five years ago, there was pretty much no fund balance in the enterprise fund. It's not called fund balance, it's net position, but it was, and nobody really knew what it was. It fluctuated from negative 500 to 200,000, you know, it was all over. We've done a good job of building it up, as you saw on the bottom of the slide, we're at a half a million right now in five years, so that's pretty good. So we're going to talk a little bit about rates now. Again, these rates I'm giving you tonight are not carved in stone. They're my calculations as of today. As I said, things change in these numbers every day. We will come back in August with firm numbers, but I want to get some thoughts from you guys. Okay, so the next slide. Our current budget amount shows an 8.5% increase in our sewer operation costs, a 19.9% increase in our water operation costs, and a net reduction, a reduction in net position of 182,000. So if we left everything as it is right now, and I was 100% accurate on all the numbers, we would take 182,000 out of that 500,000 that we have for net position right now. Definitely going the wrong way. Those expenses include, again, the lift station number two electrical panel, the well rehab, and the second base station. All of these could be theoretically paid out of our utility capital funds, improvement funds, which is a reserve fund set aside for capital improvements. However, that's reducing our reserve. So if we can build it into our budget, our reserves aren't affected. So the only way to do that without affecting reserves is to unfortunately increase utility rates. So in the blue, you'll see the rates that I've calculated out. The base rate, tier one is if you go over 2,000 gallons. Tier two is if you go over 20,000 gallons for water. Sewer is up to 2,000 gallons for the base, and then over 2,000 for tier one. If we put these rates into play, at the number of connections we have now based on historicals, we would increase revenue by 393,688. This would change our net position to 211,120 as the bottom line instead of the negative 182. This would allow, cover 100% of our M&amp;O, 100% of our debt, and our 10% of reserve, because not only is there this money that we go into reserve, which is our net position, but we put 22,000 in for capital improvements fund every year, and we put 34,000 into our INI reserve, both utility fund reserves. So that's an option to meet all three of our goals.
We're going to come out with a net 211 positive? And where's that going?
Which would stay in net position or fund balance. That 500 and some thousand dollars would become 700 and some thousand.
Why don't we just target a net zero?
Why don't we just target a net zero?
We can, we could transfer in, but then we, those monies become restricted. And if we have repairs or things that exceed, we'll have to go into fund balance.
What's the, what's the proposed percent increase, so I don't have to do the math here, from twenty-five to twenty-six?
The, on the rates?
Yes.
It's those.
The base rate.
It's those percentages that were on there earlier. Eight point five for the sewer.
And what's the rate increase that we expect from BWA?
Eight percent.
Okay.
That's built into this, but eight point five percent increase on our sewer rate and a nineteen point nine percent increase on our water rate.
Okay. Water operation costs, what percent of the operation cost is the BWA rate? What percent of the nineteen point nine?
I don't have that in front of me. I don't have that in front of me.
That's the detail I would want to see before I make a recommendation.
Okay.
I, water rates are already through the roof for people.
Oh, yeah.
Especially those on a fixed income. And I have extreme reservations about increasing the rates unless we absolutely have to in order to stay whole and to break even.
Right.
But BWA sets the rates.
No, I understand that. I want to know what.
But they're doing major capital work over there.
What our rate is in compared to what they're raising their rate to us, does that make sense? So if they're, if they're raising their rate to us ten percent, I'm making up numbers here, and we're saying we're going to raise our rate twenty percent, I have a problem with that.
So I can get that for you, I just don't have it in front of me.
Yeah.
But it's, and this isn't, don't quote me, but I want to say it's like three hundred and fifty thousand we're paying to BWA. And our total water is one point four million. So.
Yeah, we use our wells.
And we get that half of our water from them.
Yeah, I know we're going to talk about rates, and I'm all for the, I want to know that stuff, but I think I would really like to see if we use the other funds to help with that cost to avoid increasing the rates. How does that affect the contingency, what, you know, like what we have, just what we would put in versus not put in, and you know what I mean? Kind of, the different options.
Well, let's segue to my next slide. So, this one. This is if we moved those capital projects that we, that I said were eligible to be out of the capital. Utility capital improvement fund, the forty-five thousand for lift station two and the hundred and thirty-two thousand for the well rehab. The second base station. So that would decrease our expense by a hundred and seventy-two thousand, which would bring our net change and net position to a negative ten thousand instead of a negative hundred and eighty-two. But we've depleted some of our reserve. Then to come to a similar bottom line, the rates would still need to be increased, but not quite as much. So, the blue again is what I'm projecting. So we would add two hundred and twenty thousand to our revenue. And we would come out two hundred and nine thousand positive net position. Our net change to the reserve balance, though, would, we would take it down by ninety-three thousand dollars. So.
From what it is today, or what it is projected?
What it is today. Because it would also change.
But we're also, so we're also going to be putting into it in the future, right?
Yeah.
So, so we would get that ninety-three thousand back next year.
We could.
Sometime.
Yeah. So you can look at it a few different ways, I mean.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah, right. And, and I look at this and my head spins. But, we would be, our ten percent that we want to put away to reserve would be lower because our expenditures are lower. So it would be a hundred and seventy, or seventeen thousand two hundred less that we would need to make. But we would also be taking a hundred and seventy-two thousand out of our net reserve. And I'm sitting here trying to remember all my calculations to get to this number, but.
We're in net reserve right now?
What?
Where are we at? Are we close to like a meeting or something?
What?
On the net reserve.
We're at a half a million.
Oh, it was a half, okay, I think it was something.
For the net position on the utility fund. So, and these numbers are not what I'm, what I'm asking you to approve tonight because this was a quick calculation to get an idea of where they would be. I, I have a more in-depth calculation that I need to do once I know exactly what you guys lean toward. But whether you want to take some out of reserve to get those repairs done. And reduce the increase we have to have, or whether you would rather see the increase to keep our reserve untouched.
And I, for me, I need to see the details of both in order to make the best decision.
Okay.
I don't think it's right to make a decision based on.
Yeah.
Assumptions, if you will. And I, I want to see what the pass-through cost is versus in excess of the pass-through cost from BWA.
The pass-through cost?
So they charge us a rate, and then we in turn charge a rate.
But our rate is based on all of our expenses?
I understand, but there's got to be a way to figure, figure out. What, what we are charging in excess of BWA's rate, right?
Okay, I can do some. So I can send that out to you guys, I can do some more in-depth work. But, one or another, we're going to have to do a rate increase, and I hate that. I have noticed, pretty much every city around us is having to do a rate increase as well, so you're not alone.
No, we have the unfortunate position of being reliant on their water, and that does come at a price.
Yeah.
They are doing major capital over there, and every city attached to them is getting a rate increase.
Yep.
We're, I might also point out, we're one of very few cities operating in the bottom. But that's because.
No, understood. And I want to remain that way.
Prior, so I, I want to be real clear, what got us to here can get us into the red really quick.
Yep.
So, and we can pass a budget.
Those are the tough decisions that council made.
And, I mean, there's a third option, which I wouldn't recommend, but that is leaving it as is and ending the year with a negative fund balance adjustment.
No, we can't do that.
No.
And I don't want to do that.
That's irresponsible.
Yeah.
And that's not what any of us are here to do.
So I tried to work out some middle ground. Even as I'm talking, my wheels are still turning, I've been working on this around how many days.
It looks good.
But, I want you guys to have the best information possible. So I will send some more calculations to you guys, and maybe through Eric, you can respond, kind of, which way you're going. We will, we normally approve the new rates in August, so.
I just would like to have those details at, at the next meeting so that we can openly discuss it. And people have the opportunity to hear.
Okay.
The reasons behind the decisions that are made.
So with the actual increase I'm promoting with the data behind it, or do you still want options? Because we usually.
I would like the data behind both options.
Okay.
Not, not the do nothing option.
No, no. But, okay.
Okay.
Okay. And that is my budget presentation. Did I go over three minutes?
No, no.
Very good.
I think you still have half a minute left.
And anytime you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me. And I can try to answer, it gets very confusing. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Move on to discussion and action items. A, we're going to discuss and consider extending the contractual agreement with Waste Connections for residential solid waste.
Do we have a performance clause in their contract?
I think they're pretty much the only game it's done.
We had, no, last time we bid this, we had.
Two, one other.
One other. They were very close in cost, we didn't really have a large clientele base to compare them against or to know how good or bad they would be. I think they were off in price a little bit, but their performance is completely unacceptable.
Really?
Waste Connections, yes, a hundred percent. So their heavy trash disposal is terrible. We cite citizens for high grass, for junk in their yard, for broken down cars, for all sorts of things, but we're not holding this company to the same standard. They're making the city look like crap when they leave heavy trash on the side of the road for days and days and days longer than it should be. And this is every single month. It's not a one-off rain event, it's not because of a storm, it's not because, oh, once every six months, they had everyone call in sick. It's every month.
The other one was worse.
According to Laura, she and I were talking about it today, and she had talked to William, a lot of it is things that cannot be picked up, that go against the guidelines which we have posted.
And I made a request today that they please have their drivers tag these.
Because that's not happening.
Yeah.
He said there's one set of drivers that are tagging it, there's multiple rounds of heavy trash, the claw, the, the different types of brush, whatever.
Yep.
One set of them tag better than the other set, and so I, because I get it too, I hear it, because I put out a public notice, that's a lie, so I get to hear it. And so I've stressed to him, like, they need to tag this, like, for instance, one of them was a water heater full of water. So, they went back out and picked it up as a courtesy, but it's not supposed to be picked up, but it wasn't tagged. So, a lot of what's still.
I don't know how much is that you're talking about, man, and how much is the length of time it takes them to pick it up?
Right.
Sometimes it can take a week, week and a half.
Understood.
It depends on the volumes. So I, I don't know, you know, how much of what you're seeing is.
He was in town today and drove through town and stopped by here and told us what was left was.
Like I noticed.
Stuff that wasn't supposed to be picked up.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah, because, there was some on my street, and it's like, they cut a whole tree down, you know, but they're not going to pick that up.
We tell them.
Because it's, yeah.
And Marcus tells them.
Or they take down a fence, you know, that's construction debris.
So let me, let me present it this way. In our contract, our lender contract term is up August thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And we have the option to renew for two one-year periods, so we can only do one year at a time. We did question Waste Connections about a CPI increase. I just received an email just a little bit ago that stated our general manager is going to talk to a district manager to try to get us a, a pricing structure or a CPI increase if any worked out for the upcoming fiscal year. Based on Waste Connections' recommendation, I recommend that council table this to the next meeting because that's what he thought would be best. If there is a CPI increase and you guys think it's too much, you know, we can, we can move forward with another option instead of extending, which was my initial recommendation. But to table would be, would be my request. Regarding continued services, we've talked to our local rep, and we should be locked in this pricing through September thirtieth. And if we have to go out for bid, trash services won't stop, we can still serve homeless. But as of right now, that's, they're making that recommendation, that we'll make to the next meeting.
And the contract expires Aug- August thirty-first, you said? And we'll have a meeting before that?
Yeah, that's correct.
In the meantime, can we find out the specifics of their contract and find out if there's a performance clause? If there's specific language in their contract that states they must tag items that are not to be picked up? Because they're very inconsistent. And like the fences, sometimes they pick them up, sometimes they don't, they have to be consistent. That's what people get frustrated with. Sometimes they do it, sometimes they don't, they get used to the extras, if you will, and then all of a sudden, the next crew doesn't do it. Well, you've already set the precedent that you're going to do that.
But all, to, to, after the last hurricane, they did pick up fences for a time being.
Correct.
There was a window.
Which, the public was made well aware that that was a very specific window of time in order to allow everyone to clean up this mass amount of debris that was occurring all at once, right?
And I think some people didn't repair their fences for a while after the hurricane, for whatever reason. Yeah, I understand, because I had to pay for a fence too, but that doesn't mean that the city's going to pick up that old fence then.
Agreed.
They just take it out panel by panel.
Just put a little bit out.
If they're going to pick it up, let's do it, but I agree with that.
So I came from a city to the south of here, down by the water, and we had the other company, we switched from Waste Connections to the other company. So I already don't like that our recycling only is picked up every other week, because I like to recycle. I spent fifteen years in Germany, so it's in my head. But that other company, we've got a much smaller trash can, and I know, I mean, it's just, my wife and I, and we fill our trash can up every week. So I mean, I've seen how they work, and I mean, they left trash for months on the side of the road.
But, and I, I do want to say, not, not for or against anybody or any one contractor, the other one we looked at had a, what was called a hybrid program. It was very different than what we were used to, which is a, a once a week trash pickup. It involved heavy trash mixed with regular trash, and it was, but that's the only way they bid it, that's the only way they said they would.
Right.
So I think that was a little bit of a deterrent for council too, because it was just not.
I don't think there's a ton of complaints about the regular trash pickup. I think some people would prefer more frequent or whatever, but as far as complaints about the service, I think it's minimal, it's the heavy trash pickup that is a major problem.
Okay.
So I don't know if those are two completely separate crews. I would imagine they're different personnel.
They're, they're different equipment, different personnel, different.
That's a management issue, and somebody needs to do their job.
Okay.
And manage their employees.
I will definitely look into it.
So I make a motion to table this to.
That's, that's what I'm requesting, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to table the contract agreement for with Waste Connections till next council, August council.
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's the record reflect, the motion's been tabled.
Thank you.
Think we can get Cliff to start picking up heavy trash?
In his spare time?
He's got the equipment.
Hey, he's got a new loan.
Okay, we're going to move on to B, discussion regarding potential amendments to the city's permit fee schedule and direction to staff prepare a draft ordinance for future considerations.
Mayor, council, in your packet is your comparison chart, I'm not sure what all you wanted for that, but.
I saw the comparison chart, Eric, but I didn't see what I asked for last time was what we have to pay the external agencies versus what we charge. I wanted their fee schedule versus our fee schedule, and I also asked for a total of what we have collected in administration fees over the past twelve months.
I asked Katie Thursday, and she took it up for me, as of Thursday, we had collected sixty-six hundred this fiscal year.
For how many permits?
Whatever sixty-six hundred is divided by fifty.
Okay. But do we have the breakdown?
And the breakdown as far as, I started looking into it, and we aren't making a lot of money on any of these, but probably.
My request is in terms of transparency.
We can give you the rate sheet.
It's, it's fair to openly discuss.
Yeah.
What the city has to pay versus what we're charging people to maintain their own property.
So, one thing I wanted to discuss with that, as you can see the bottom line on the budget for general fund.
Yep.
A lot of that overhead, it goes into permitting, we have overhead for that, we have office staff, we have software, we have things. So, we, if we reduce our permit fees, that doesn't just affect that general ledger line of revenue, it affects the bottom line.
Understood.
So, and they're kind of convoluted because some of them are Marcus, some of them are BB, not BB two, whatever they're called.
Safe bill.
Um, so it's, it's hard to pull out. There are different GLs too. Um, so, um.
But there has to be reconciliation factor that we know that we've paid only what we've been charged, right?
Yeah, we, I mean, we pay the bill.
Mm-hmm.
Once every couple of months, whenever they get it to us.
Yep.
Um, so it's hard to compare apple to apple.
We don't have a rate schedule for them, a fee schedule?
But say, say we have just one inspection for the day, we're charged a fee. If we have three, we're charged a different fee, but we have to be able to at least cover the higher fee, which is the one.
Yeah. Every permit could be charged at the one a day rate.
Mm-hmm.
But if they do two or more.
We're not charged, we're charged a different rate.
We're charged like a third. So it's very, it's hard to compare.
It's a sliding scale, more or less.
Yeah.
It's based on how many they do a day.
And so even though we're bringing in more money than we're paying out, if we reduce them, there are those that would cost us more than what we're paying.
Understood.
To, to, to give you a, a case in point, so what, what we brought in in, uh, is it two thousand twenty, the first number on the chart? What, what it, so, so in two thousand twenty, we brought in thirty, say thirty-nine thousand dollars. Then it went up fifty, fifty-five thousand. Last year, forty-two thousand, and this year, we're back to the same amount again. So it varies, and we don't do anything.
Yeah, but our expenditure was basically the same. You know, very, much less than what came in. Oh, I know what you're talking about. Um, so, you know, we can reduce it. We could reduce it by the application fee. Um, that was on, in our ordinance, but never enacted, never charged until we noticed it a few years ago, or, no, two year ago. And we started charging it.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, it was in our price gu- price schedule, our fee schedule, and we weren't charging it. They said it's on there, council approved it, we have to charge it. So for this fiscal year, we've taken in, taken in sixty-one, sixty-six hundred, um, which will translate to about, by the end of the year, somewhere between nine and ten thousand. We can get rid of that, but looking at all the, um, fee schedules from, or the, the permit costs from other cities around us, we are not the highest, we are not the lowest. We are the simplest. And that should count for something. Some of them, it's as much as.
Until you have to write the check.
Yeah, but some of them, it's like, we're going to charge you this amount plus so much per outlet. So much per drone.
I read those.
You know, and their fee schedules were, or their permit price schedules were thirty-some page of long.
Yep.
Um, but we are not the highest. The only thing that stands out, Hamilton's the only other one that has an application fee.
So we could find, some of them are not as easy to find.
Yeah.
You'll notice there were gaps in, like, like Jackson's fee schedule was difficult to, it was very vague. I feel like there's got to be more fees that they charge that were not sent to us when we requested it, but.
So.
It was hard to compare apples to apples on that chart, just based on, they're not charged the same way.
I just want to be clear, I have no interest in comparing, comparing us to other cities. That, that wasn't my request.
I, I was under the assumption you thought we were way higher than other cities.
No, I just said in general, the fees felt high to me, not in comparison to anyone else. Um, I, I'm a huge advocate of doing what you want with your house. It really kind of angers me in some ways that we have to get permits to do certain things, like a hot water heater that you need to live like a civilized human. But that's neither here nor there. We're not obviously going to get rid of those. But I want to see what the city has to pay versus what the resident has to pay.
So you're requesting more data at this time?
Yes.
You want to make a motion?
Um, no.
You don't want to table it?
Do you want me to motion to table it or just have it for next?
Just bring it back.
Okay.
I, yeah, if you table it, then we have to get it on the next agenda, and if we don't have all the information for you.
Okay, so then you'll put it for future agenda items? Okay.
Okay.
We just put discussion.
So on to the future discussions. Okay. Moving on to C, consider items removed from consent agenda. Which was B? No, no, that was not B, sorry.
None.
None, okay. Okay, we're going to move on to executive session. The time is now eight, seven fifty-nine, begin, and council will adjourn for executive session.
We have it in, oh, shit.
Mm-hmm, yes.
My sister's about here, right?
Really? I mean, I don't want to be like an animal. So I'm glad I didn't get there.
All right, the time is now eight fifteen four and we'll bring this meeting back to session. There are no actions as a result of our executive session, so we will be moving on to capital improvements project update. A, we'll have a CIP report June twenty twenty five.
Yeah, that includes a copy of council's agenda. I think nothing's changed really much since last, uh, last month. I think it's notable to mention the parks master plan that's currently getting public input through a survey, monkey survey. It's only been a week in. One of the objectives this week is to see how that's going and what kind of response we've gotten. Other than that, MIT Mob project, we're on the, we're on the third phase of paving. Hopefully that'd be done within a couple of weeks. We're gonna move on to twelve run. And other than that, I don't have anything past what we talked about last month, but if you have any questions about anything, you're happy to answer.
Did the county finish that road and I'm sure they're still doing that. What was it?
Albert and...
Albert and yeah.
No, they're just still going.
Yeah, they're, they're still going. Yeah. That's, and I'm sorry I don't mention that, that's gonna be a really quick project, so it's, uh, they're talking about Portland cement stabilization tomorrow for everything they kill. As long as the asphalt crews are available, I bet we're done with it. That's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to city manager's report.
Uh, everything is pretty much the same as it was on report Friday. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right. Uh, we're gonna move on to council member comments and reports. Councilmember Stahlberg, anything to add?
Um, those of y'all who missed All American Night, it was a cool, fun event with lots of good food. So, uh, I was there and, uh, it wasn't as big of a turnout as they were anticipating, but it was still good. So, uh, thanks to, uh, the fire department who was there, uh, police presence there. Um, I was a popcorn server, never done that before in my life. Thank you, Cliff and Eric, for stepping up and helping us out the other day with our deal, uh, over there and off of Oakwood Shores. Um, it, uh, helped move that process along, uh, where we're getting to where we need to be, where we should be.
What are you talking about?
We'll talk after this. Um, so...
Just one of you, please.
All right.
Uh, storm season, y'all see we got one coming already, maybe.
Calm down.
I went and bought some extra water. So, um, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, uh, sorry I couldn't make it to the All American Night, but appreciate everybody who did and volunteered for that. And, uh, this, uh, budget that we reviewed this evening looks real good. Thank you.
And so?
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Ritter?
Yeah, I sadly echo Mike's, uh, sentiments on missing All American Night. I foolishly took a red eye flight the night before from, uh, or that, I arrived late that morning, um, and I'm too old to do that, so I was not feeling well. Uh, but anyway, looks like it was a great turnout, thanks to all the staff and, uh, Paul for, you know, making his presence known and the police department, fire department and everybody else who participated. I've really enjoyed, um, being a part of that event in the past.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Yerson?
Um, so I'd like to say, you know, it was nice with all the people we had out here tonight. That's the point of us being up here is to have the citizens come in and, you know, voice their concerns, their, their issues, whatever it is, you know? We may not always make everybody happy, but, you know, our, our job up here, you know, I think we do pretty well together is to collectively try to do what's best for the city. Um, you know, it's, it's not a matter of separation, but a matter of trying to look at everything as a whole. And I would encourage anybody, you have a problem, a concern, issues, come out and, you know, bring them up. We can't do anything if we don't know about it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fountain, is that guy anything?
Uh, not much. I pretty much covered everything.
Nothing?
Not too much. It's hot out there, y'all stay hydrated, 'cause I'm out in it all day and I know where our mayor is too, so he knows, but it's hot.
Is it hot where you're at?
It's not hot where I'm at.
Oh, it is where I am.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, everybody here got all the thanks for the All American Night, so I'll say it one more time. Thank you, guys. I was absent. Um, it was a good turnout. It's good to see everybody. I would also like to, uh, thank Mr. and Mrs. Yerson. I think they're about to go to central Texas to do a little help. So he is asking for some help. If you feel like assisting him with any needs, I think it's a good time to reach out to Mr. Yerson. Um, all the staff has been great. All council's been great. Be prepared for that storm, like Paul said.
Hopefully it goes well east of us.
Kills Eric every time you bring up a storm.
I appreciate everybody's effort, so that's all I have. Do we have any items of community interest?
I was just gonna reiterate what Cliff said about the parks, um, survey. Everyone, if you can, if you see this, go to our website, social media. Um, I even sent out a public notice. If you're on that, you got an email with a link to take the survey. Every response helps us make our parks better for you.
I took you...
Oh, and KRB has an event. I apologize. Let me find it. KRB is having, um, this Saturday here. Um, I believe it starts at ten AM. They're going to have another Master Gardener series. Um, just it's part of their cycle that they're doing to, to do outreach with the master gardeners. So they'll usually have refreshments and door prizes and, um, it's here in council chambers, um, Saturday morning.
Eight AM or so?
I think it's at ten.
Ten.
Um, details can be found on the keeper to a beautiful Facebook page.
Okay. Anybody have anything else to add to that? How's our recycling going at the, the city garden?
They just got a check for, I believe, like a hundred and forty dollars for the last quarter. So when it's like a penny a pound, it's pretty good.
How many mattresses?
I did see a drawer or something like it, but no mattresses.
They just end up on two thousand four. I saw two more.
Mattresses? No way! At ours?
I have pictures.
But how quickly were they removed?
They were quickly removed.
Okay.
As long as they get removed, I'm happy.
Okay. They've been, they've been pretty good in response.
Chief goes, "Don't, don't look over there." I said, "I got pictures of them."
They're also doing the recycling here in the lobby for cords and...
Old glasses.
The recycling bins over at the community garden, the ones for clothing and all that? How often do those get emptied?
As often as any'd be.
Yeah.
They've been overflowing for a minute.
Yeah.
They've been very popular.
And when we alert, it's biweekly, but when we alert them, they come immediately. But I don't always know that they're overfilling.
Maybe something we look out for, 'cause we're there daily.
Yeah. It's just an email and they're usually there by the end of the day.
They're, they're very responsive and like the previous people who did something similar.
I think just schedule-wise, it's biweekly.
Yeah.
They're asking for us to place a third and I've been pushing it off.
Well, they're overflowing right now.
I don't need to do that.
Why'd you fill them up? I may have. I'm not sure if I took the clothes off the kids or if the kids are there too.
So we, what, the only thing we have for future agenda items is up there on a...
So Trish is gonna bring more on utility rates and we'll get more details working on the permits.
And the contract.
The contract.
Oh, yeah. Connections. And then we will hold a public hearing on the CCPD agenda, which is formality for adoption. We will also have, um, agenda items to call for a public hearing in September, um, for tax rate and budget. Which, formalities.
Okay. Well, the time is now nine AM, Saturday morning. Actually, it's nine oh four with no other business discussed. This meeting's adjourned.